Colin's order the company meeting conference. The CIP with me tonight is. Call the role. Please make any noise. Okay, is Counselor Naomi Zabat here?
Present, yes, I'm here.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Todd Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Giovanni Recupro. Counselor Liam Robinson. Counselor Calvin Brown. Counselor Damali Vido.
Present.
Counselor Melinda Vega Maldonado is absent. Counselor Ymir Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Roya Vigeneda present. Counselor Angel Lopez.
Here.
Okay. Nine present, two absent. Okay, the call of the meeting is to discuss the revised CIP for 2020. At this time, we're just going to allow the city manager who is present to explain to us the changes to the original submitted CIP. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. So, folks, there was no real magic to this. We, we looked at this CIP with a new lens, given the revenue problems we anticipate from COVID-19, and came to the realization that our original projection, our original proposed CIP was just too rich, was using too much free cash, too much stabilization money in a year where we had to preserve some of that. So, we went back and tried to cull some projects that we thought would be deferred without creating too much harm to the city. We still, we've retained a lot, and particularly retained projects that we think enhance the quality of life in the community. And we were particularly seeking to retain projects that had a grant component to it because we didn't want to forego any grant. And so, I will just, if you'll allow me, go through what we have proposed to change from the original project, original CIP, because we went through this whole CIP at a subcommittee meeting. So, what I propose to do is just go through what and where we have proposed to change things. So, I'll just go through this and then I can take questions at the end. So, the first thing, the first project that we proposed to change, actually the first two, are the money we had proposed to set aside for architectural service and renovations of public buildings. And we basically cut that in half. We didn't want to eliminate that. There's a lot of public building work that we need to do, but we felt we could have a lean year next year and just do half of what we had originally proposed to do and still get done some important projects and really focus on the most dire, the ones that are our most dire need. And so, we cut both of those first two items in half. So, instead of $100,000 for architectural services, we're proposing $50,000. And instead of $1 million in public building renovations, we propose to set aside $500,000. The next project that got changed was the next one, item three on the list, which is the Mary C Burke Roof Project. That was a million-dollar project as originally proposed. We're now splitting that in two. Half will be done this year and half next year. And the, what we can do this year, we can do not from new money, but from reallocating some money from some old projects. And that, those transfers you actually have before you tonight, and had before you when I submitted it. So, it eliminates that, that Phase Three piece of it entirely from the CIP. Puts, and allows us to do half a million dollars of that work roughly in fiscal year '21 by way of transfers from old projects. And you have those transfer requests before you. And the other piece of this building will be deferred until FY '22, and you will see it in the FY '22 as a Phase Four proposal for $500,000. The next thing that we changed was to just push out one year, the dump truck and the plow. Again, we're just trying to minimize what we're spending in this year. And so, we feel we can get away, we had two plow trucks in here. This was the, this was the one that we felt we could get away with deferring until next year. Likewise, we eliminated the electrical vehicle, you know, not the highest of urgency. We'll push that out a year. We are retaining the trash truck with the plow. That's the other plow truck. It's really the trash truck that's important because we have no backup to our trash truck right now, and we feel that we need to have a backup. If that trash truck goes down, we're really, we're emptying trash into one of our regular pickup trucks, and it's just not efficient. The municipal, the next thing that we have changed was municipal water meter replacement. That's a multi-year project. We are proposing, we have been proposing to put $300,000 aside every year for like five years to do that project. We're just going to reduce that by $50,000. We still want to continue this water meter replacement program, but we'll just shave $50,000 off it. The next thing that we took out of the program was the vehicle for the parking crew, but we have a transfer before you. We have some leftover money from elsewhere that we can use to acquire that vehicle, so we're not going to use CIP money for that purpose. So, we took it out. I tried to retain most of the park projects, the annual park project and the Chelsea Square project, because they both come with a grant component that I didn't want to forego. I left the Garden Cemetery in there as well. I just don't want to, you know, that has been a very important project for a lot of us, myself included. I don't want to just have it sit, you know, with nothing happening for a whole year. So, I am proposing that we continue that phased construction of that project, even though it's all city money at $450,000. That's the next phase, and I really want to do that. So, I have that continuing in the plan. But we did defer the pocket pockets, Spencer and Eastern, which was going to be all city money. We deferred that to next year. Same with the next two school projects. We talked extensively with the school department over how we could, you know, phase some of these projects in a way to recognize the impact of COVID-19 on the city and not use as much school stabilization money in this year. And so, we're pushing that, those two projects, both the Veterans Field Design and the Williams School Playground, are being pushed out a year. They'll still get done, but just a year later than we had hoped. I'm retaining the CAD system. We have to have a new CAD system. That CAD system, which is the computer aided dispatch system in E91, is a disaster. We need to replace it desperately. And so, I have continued to carry that in this CIP. But I pushed out a year this camera replacement money. This is money that we use to add cameras in the city and replace them. If there's a desperate need for a camera here and there, we will probably be able to find a little bit of money for it. But the big part of money we usually have to do this, we won't appropriate money for that this year. And the Mark Cruises, we just reduced that by $50,000. So, we might not be able to, we, we have a program where we turn over those vehicles every few years, and it may be that we just turn over one less this coming year. The signalization upgrade, this was a big project. This is the major signalization change at Pearl, Margino, and Williams. That's a $750,000 project. We're going to push that out for a year just to try to save some money. You know, that is an important project, but it was one we thought we could kick out a year. I will tell you that we're going to try to, just on this project in particular, there is part of the Federal CARES Act money, added a lot of money to the Economic Development Agency for Eastern, for the Eastern Sea Board of the United States. That's the agency that gave us the $3 million for Beecham Street. We had a conversation with that contact there down in Philadelphia, and we're telling her of our woes, and she strongly encouraged us to try to, to make a grant application for this project. It's in the same Florida as the project they gave us money for. They really liked that project because of its tie into the Purdue Center. And she said that we might have a chance at some of that money. There's $259 million set aside for the Eastern Sea Board in that Economic Development Agency part that came out of the Federal CARES Act money. And she's encouraging us, you know, there's no guarantee, but she thought it would be a competitive application. So, we're going to put something together to see if we can't get money for this signalization upgrade out of that EDA. We won't know that probably until late calendar year, maybe even early fiscal, early calendar year '21, but it's a possibility that we could be able to have this funded by a grant as opposed to city money in FY '22. The replacement of the fire car will push out a year. The relocation of E911, this is a critical issue for us. That building is, is in bad shape and cannot be the headquarters for E911 much longer. But this was a $3 million expense out of general stabilization, and we just felt we couldn't pursue that this year, given our need for stabilization money. So, we're going to push that out. That's another place where we could get a significant amount of grant money from the state, especially if we're going to regionalize with Revere and Everett and Winthrop. And so, we're still exploring that. As I've said from the very beginning, we're only regionalizing if A, we're in the lead, and B, the facility is in Chelsea. But we have some opportunity to do that, and so, we're going to continue to explore that. But this is being pushed out, this request for money for the relocation of E911. The next item was, we've just reduced by $100,000 the amount of money we're going to put towards our Chapter 90 funding. The state gives us $596. We were proposing to put $600,000. We'll put $500,000 and just maybe have a minor reduction in the number of streets we are going to do. I still think we'll get close to doing the whole list we had hoped to do for the next construction season. But Marlborough Street, which was a separate significant chapter, project that we were going to fund entirely on our own because it's, it's a $600,000 item. We are pushing that out another year. We just, you know, this is an effort to just reduce the amount of free cash we're seeking to use. The replacement of the electrical enclosures is the next one. We're deferring. Those are the electrical boxes. We change a few every year. We can get away with skipping that a year. The stormwater management plan, this is a requirement that we have to do for, as a, operating our water and sewer system, but we can get away with $100,000 as opposed to $150,000. We just can't eliminate that item entirely. It's a requirement of operating a water and sewer system. The fiber maintenance, we're reducing that by $100,000. We think we can get away with that. And the tablets, so the city council, we're proposing to put that off for a year. So, those are all the changes. What it means is that there's significantly less request for free cash and stabilization money. So, the free cash request, which was originally $5.3 million, is now down to just $3.1 million. If we do all the things I'm proposing to do with free cash, all the items that have already come before you, including all the COVID-19 emergency requests, the pending free cash requests that are before you, the, and the anticipated need for free cash to cover deficits, which is always an issue at the end of the year. I still think, even with all this expenditure of free cash, we will close the books with about $2 million left in free cash that will roll over into next year. And that should be helpful to us. Even, so that's even if you appropriate this $3.1 million for CIP. The school stabilization request has been significantly reduced. We were originally proposing to take $2.9 million of school stabilization for the CIP. We're now only taking $725,000. And we're not, and previously, we were seeking to use $3 million of general stabilization, and we are not using any of that general stabilization for, for this proposal. So, there's, there are some, those are really the significant changes. It's still a pretty robust CIP. There'll still be a lot of good roadway projects and park projects included in here. It just will be a little less than what was originally proposed in February before COVID-19 came. So, I can entertain any questions. Again, I just, you know, this is, you know, this is subjective line drawing. We're trying to find projects that we can defer, and, you know, everyone has a different opinion on what's important and what isn't. But we've tried to defer what we thought was reasonable and try to keep what we thought would still make a difference in the quality of life of residents for next to school.
Counselor Brown. You need to unmute him. Counselor Brown.
Hold on. Sorry, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Yep.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So, I just had a question regarding, when we were talking about the Mary C Burke, you're talking about the second phase or the third, of the third part. You're talking about the roof deck, and then you were talking about, you said from what? What's the other piece that you were speaking of?
It's just, we broke that project up into two phases. It was a roof and ondoloak repair project for the Mary C Burke, and we can do it over the course of two years instead of doing it all in one year. And so, it was a million-dollar project. We are going to, so it'll be 500, roughly $500,000 a year instead of a million. So, we'd only need to spend $500,000 this year. But instead of using $500,000 this year of any new money, we found some, we had money in old school CIP projects, and we're proposing to do this phase, this coming year, this $500,000 phase with a transfer from some old CIP school projects. And those transfer requests were submitted to you a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, so if we transfer that, we approve that transfer, will that $500,000 be sufficient? Or will an additional $500,000 come out of this next year's budget?
We'll still need money next year in the FY '22 CIP for $500,000.
Okay, thank you.
But that piece of the project will be done in next construction season 2021 in supposed to this construction season.
Thank you. There was a question, Mr. President. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Mr. President, I got a question.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes, Tom, you mentioned something about Marlborough Street. You're going to put that away for a year, you said?
Yep, we were thinking of doing that street this year, but we'll do it next year. It just, it has a key, that, that cost of that street alone is $600,000. It's all city money. There's no state money involved with that. So, it just saves us $600,000 for this year. And we'll, you know, I agree, it's a, the street needs improvement, but we felt it could last one more year.
Okay, well, I, I think, I think that street really needs to be, to be fixed. There's other street that you probably need to stop, go to work. And you guys have different streets, but Marlborough Street's really needs, really, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I'm in complete agreement with you. Marlborough Street definitely needs to be done. It's just, it's a long street, and if we do Marlborough Street, it eats up all of, we only get $596,000 in Chapter 90 money each year from the state. That one street eats it all up. So, if we put, if we use Chapter 90 money from Marlborough Street, we can't do another street in the whole city. So, it, it is, it's a project that really needs to be paid outside of Chapter 90, and we're proposing that we'll just defer it for one year. We will definitely do it next year, but it won't stop in this construction season.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Tom, to Fidel, given that certain streets will get done that were proposed, as a short-term solution, is there any thoughts about doing, not the large projects, but streets that may have a lot of potholes and cracks and so forth, doing a, a quick skim and maybe increasing the budget for a quick grind and, and, and paving so that we're not doing the, the more intensive street replacement, but we just do something so that a lot of these streets can get evened out and don't have as many potholes?
Yeah, so I'll just say, I think we're going to be able to do most of the program that we had proposed. We're only cutting out of a million-dollar program, we're only cutting a million, we're cutting $100,000. So, I think we're going to get to most of the streets that we had proposed to do.
Well, last year, we, we did seven streets, we did, did the process that Daniel referenced. And it's called micro paving, basically where, where you, 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 you overchain, right? With, with, with one inch of asphalt. Clinton Street was, was, was done that way, and, and a few streets that did in, in, in practice. It, it's, it's a really effective process. I mean, it's a much cheaper, as you said, so we're, we're continuing that one.
What about saying example of Pearl Street? I can't remind, I don't know if Pearl's.
Pearl's in there for next year.
Next year, so is that a street?
I would say for this construction season.
Oh, this construction season, it will be done?
It will be done this summer. It will be done this summer. Yeah, usually with, with, with micro paving is that the street has to be in, 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 in okay shape, right? If it's a street like, like Marlborough Street that's really in bad shape, it, it, it's, it's, it's too far along. You know what I mean? So, so we, with, with Pearl Street, to micro paving, we try to choose, those streets are, are, are in generally okay shape to, to, to micro paving.
So, just to be clear on Pearl, I know we're doing from Hawthorne to the square. Are we going the rest of Pearl Street?
Yes, so, yeah, so it's, it's, the, 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 is, is, uh, uh, from Fourth Street to, uh, to Congress, and we're, we're doing that this summer.
Are there any other counselors that want to, I see Counselor Vido.
Thank you, Counselor Vigeneda. My question is, how much money are you cutting total? What, what is the total budget of the cap, the CIP? What are you cutting? And when you say you need to leave money in the stabilization fund, I'm just curious about what the, the mentality is around that because my impression was that all of the money that we've invested thus far are related to COVID will be reimbursed. So, what is it that we're trying to supplement here?
So, let me take each question at a time. So, the capital improvement plan as originally proposed was for $24.6 million, and this revised plan is for 15 point, no, I'm sorry, I'm getting the wrong number. It's for 16.4 million. So, we're cutting about $8 million? The second part of the question is, why do we want to save money? And so, I'm trying to save as much stabilization money as I can because we have right now about $24 million in stabilization money. We're going to need $5.5 million for this year's, the budget. If this is a two-year problem, we'll probably need double that amount in fiscal year '22. So, that will eat up a lot of that money, and so, I'm trying not to spend a whole lot of it in CIP for the moment. So, that was sort of, that was the rationale for not spending stabilization money because I'm trying to reserve it for this rainy day, which is happening right now.
When you say the $5 million, and next year might be $10 million, what specifically are you referring to, Mr. Ambrosino?
The, the budget I'm going to present to you this week has a $5.5 million budget deficit in it. I anticipate, so we have a budget with all of our expenses, and the revenues that I anticipate next year will be $5.5 million short of what I need. So, the only available place where we can find $5.5 million is general stabilization.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Now, if I could just, I, I do want to say that my estimates of revenue next year are, at least on the city side, quite conservative. If it turns out that we do better than I anticipate, we won't end up using as much stabilization. But I'm anticipating the worst case, and hopefully, it's not quite as bad as that.
So, I, am I all set, Mr. President, to speak?
Yes, Counselor Brown, you're, you're free to speak.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on Damali's conversation. So, out of that $8.2 million, which is the, the figure that's left after the reduction of the proposed budget in the revived budget for the CPI, how much of that will we receive back from the COVID-19? And will that money make up the difference for that $5.2 million, $5.5 million that you're looking to believe will be a deficit next year?
So, you're not going to get any money back for any of this expenditure related to the CIP. What we expect to get back from, what we expect to get back sometime during the course of fiscal year '21 is the roughly $3 million or so you have appropriated for various COVID-19-related expenses. If we get that back in fiscal year '21, we will have that money as, you know, additional reserve. So, it will be money that will be in the city's coffers as additional reserve. We will be paid back. Basically, we've used every, the money that we have used for COVID-19-related expenditures has been mostly free cash. If we get that back, it will cover the free cash. So, we'll have more free cash next year than we otherwise would have. So, we'll have more free cash next year than we otherwise would have, or more reserves, I should say. But I don't expect to see any of that reimbursement money until sometime in fiscal year '21. But it's going to, it's going to repay us for free cash appropriations that you've already made. It's not going to repay us for anything that you're considering with respect to this CIP.
But it will all, but in actuality, it was shrink to 5.5 million to, to 2.5 million, correct? With free cash available?
Well, you could, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's just additional reserve. So, you will, at the end of the day, if you have $24 million in reserve, let's say, forget about which account they sit in, you have $24 million in reserve, and you use 5.5 million, you'd have 18.5 million left. If you then get reimbursed for reserves previously spent $3 million, now you have 21.5 million in reserve. So, yeah, it will, it won't necessarily reduce the 5.5 you're going to appropriate, but it will mean at the end of the day, at the end of FY '21, you'll have $3 million more in reserve than you otherwise would have had.
All right. I get it.
Any other counselors? Seeing none? Okay, to my colleagues, you always have the opportunity to ask some questions. We won't be voting on a CIP till next Monday, between June 8. We will be hosting prior to the meeting. We'll be accepting comments from the public. They can email us to the city council, any questions, either this evening or up until next week. Thank you. With, oh, with Counselor Brown.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. You know, you said we'll be voting on that on the 8th, which is next Monday. Can, will it be possible if the council members can get a copy of what we will be voting on? I know sometime we get it leaked, but I like to get it a little early since we already know.
It was already part of your package, but we'll resend it so that you have it in your hands again.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all right. Thank you. You can end the meeting.